This is a legislative matter, so you do not need to read your quasi judicial hearing procedure, and you don't need to ask for any conflict of interest or anything. This is a recommendation for City Commission to consider a legislative amendment to the code.
So, what do we have? We go directly to the staff report at this point? Go for it.
Thank you. My name's Kelly Gussburger. I'm an assistant planner. This text amendment, proposed text amendment is, the applicant is the Planning Division of Oregon City. We propose to amend Chapter 1750, Administration of Procedures, and the proposal would amend the appeals process for land use decisions. Currently, the City Commission hears all land use appeals. Type four appeals go to, straight to Luba. And this proposal would change that process by allowing the City Commission to decide to send an appeal to a hearings officer appointed by the City Commission. The Commission can decide to send an appeal to a hearings officer either at the time, after the appeal is made, or before an appeal is made, in anticipation of an appeal. And the other small text amendments within this proposal are just small clarifications to be consistent with Oregon statute.
Considering some of the small, we're just trying to clean up some of the appealing which on de novo hearing, where it's consistent with such state law is, really, what this is trying to address is-
If there is ever a situation where the appeals body does have some type of a conflict of interest, or to allow it as a tool for them to make the decision if a hearings officer would be appropriate to hear the case. This is not sending all cases to them. They will be at the complete discretion of the City Commission. They may never use it. It would be up to them to determine when or if it would be appropriate to use. It was more providing them an opportunity, should we ever end up in a situation where even if there is no conflict of interest, no bias, but there's the perception, and perception in some cases is going to exist from both sides, no matter what decision you enter. Or if there are situations where the city is involved as an applicant, or a negotiation associated with an application, you have that perception issue that may exist out there. And so this would provide them the opportunity, should that situation arise, to be able to fall back to a hearings officer to assist with hearing of the appeal.
This is Carrie. The other thing I would add is that by having the option of a hearings officer, hearings officers, hearings can be scheduled more quickly and don't have to fall necessarily in the City Commission's Wednesday schedule. And so they can have, if the city were in a position where they needed to make a decision more quickly, if they had a hearings officer on contract, they could go ahead and schedule that hearing much more quickly than when we end up going with the City Commission's. So again, it's another tool that allows the city a little more flexibility.
It's probably in here, and I just missed it, but who determines who the hearings officer is? Is that somebody that's appointed by the Commission?
It would go through a request for proposal process where we would receive proposals from potential candidates, and we would select a person, and that person would just be selected and out there, but we wouldn't call on them to do anything unless we called on them. And that often happens with hearings officers, that they're just on contract, but they don't actually do any work until we ask them to.
That was the next question I had, is that they're not being paid until they actually do something?
Correct.
So they're just-
On-call service.
On-call, available if needed.
Correct.
And that's how most hearings officers on contract work. Clackamas County, I mean, Clackamas County uses a hearings officer by right. I mean, they, so they have somebody who they use all the time, but it's sometimes that person can hear five cases a month, and sometimes they can hear none. And there's no, that's just the nature of their work.
Why, a pile of questions.
No kidding.
No, I'm not kidding.
Does the staff have any more to add to their presentation?
The staff report states that there was no public comment, but today we did receive one written comment from the Hazel Grove Westling Farms neighborhood. I can read that now, or you each have a copy of it at your station.
We've got it. That's fine. It's in the record. I'm okay with that.
Do we have any more questions for the staff at this point?
Yes.
Wait, because I've got a-
Yes, I understand.
Okay.
So my question when I read this, given everything that's been said, I still ask again, what is the problem we are trying to solve with this? I don't recall in my 20-plus years of living here that we have been besieged with appeals by this jurisdiction, and I just, I'm just mystified as to why this is coming up now. And I want to know what the rest of the story is, because there's always a rest of the story. My cynical reaction was, okay, just because other jurisdictions have hearings officers, does that mean that we're going to jump off the cliff too? That was the cynical part of me when I was reading this. So I go back to my original question, what's the rest of the story, and what is the problem that we are trying to solve? Because I'm, honestly, I don't see that we have a problem.
It's to provide the City Commission with a tool to address appeals, should they need it, especially in situations if there are negotiations with a potential, with an applicant, of which we may be a co-applicant to, to address that issue. If there are property negotiations that are occurring, or if we are an actual applicant in a situation, to address that, to provide them the opportunity, should they need it, if there is a conflict of interest, to have this codified to be able to utilize. I agree that our City Commission, our current City Commission and previous ones, wanted to hear appeals, that they were informed, understood the issues of the neighborhood, understood limitations of our code, or areas where we needed to improve it. So it's, it's trying to be proactive in providing a codified path for our Commission, should they need it in the future.
Just a question on that regard. Is this something that the City Commission has requested, or is this something that the Planning Department has advanced?
The Planning Department has advanced this.
Yes.
We have it on their work session tomorrow. You know, if we wanted to continue this until later, have the opportunity to have the City Commission work session, we could certainly do that as well, and bring it back at another time, and be able to have their comments included in this, the discussion from that work session.
That's kind of like your boss saying, what do you think of my idea? So I wouldn't necessarily support that. I think we need to come up with our recommendation and pass it out.
Certainly.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
They may say, no, we don't even want to hear this, and then you're just taking off our agenda, and we didn't waste any time, and we can go home. But, yeah, and I guess, to me, the, you know, this was an issue that's been buzzing even when I was on City Commission, so for at least eight years, it's been out there. And the most, I guess, compelling reason I could have for this is what Carrie said is, it's a lot easier to schedule one guy to hear everybody's issue than it is to schedule five people. And there have been times when we've been pushing the midnight clock because of, when I was on City Commission, of two or three appeals, and we're coming up against the 120-day, and they've all got to be heard, and everybody's got to get their chance. So to me, that's the most compelling reason, is it might pull one or two of those things off the plate. The flip side of it is, is I can't think of anything in my research, which is not nearly as extensive as, as, you know, people who've worked in the business, but where we've run into that wall, and, you know, where we've run out of commissioners because they've all had to recuse themselves, or whatever. And there isn't a remedy for that. It's called Luba, and we can just say, we'll pay the fee, take it to Luba, and let them hear. You know, there's a lot of other remedies that don't necessarily mean paying $100 an hour attorney to sit in a hearing.
Oh, if we could get somebody for that, right.
That's right.
I'm just, okay, eight years ago, but I'm just saying, you know, we have enough trouble trying to get you planners, to get police officers on the street, to get neighborhood liaisons, to get, you know, just office workers, you know, that can make the city work faster, to maybe make the 120-day window less of a looming feature, because you've got one or two more planners, rather than a hearings officer that hears four or five, you know. The city can, you know, hopefully will flip around and become a very developing, going concern, and, you know, you guys are going to get all sorts of busy, and we're going to have all sorts of permits issued. But, you know, I'd rather invest in staff and staff time than a neutral third party, and I put quotes right up because it's a neutral third party hired by the city. So there is that, as you said, that already that perceived bias. So to me, that's, it's better to spend $4,000 and get you a typist than it is to spend $4,000 and have one or two less meetings in the City Council. Because it's the City Council, you know, they volunteered for it, they get the big bucks.
Could you give a fiscal impact statement for this? Because that's something that I would like to see. I concur with you. I'd rather see the city spend the money on getting a citizen involvement liaison, and somebody to take care of the neighbor associations, or increase the budget for neighborhood newsletters, because that's a real need, and that would facilitate more citizen involvement, in my opinion, than this.
One of the things we did think a little bit about, and we'd be happy to come back and discuss with you in further detail, the city code does provide for the applicant to pay their own fees in certain limited situations. When, for projects cost over $1 million, for proposals that the City Commission determines are appropriate for, and we have done that. We've had applicants sign an agreement that they pay the legal fees and the planning fees associated. What we could do, and we talked about, is adding a phrase there, too, that the applicant would agree to pay the hearings officer costs if one was appointed. So that would offset the concerns that Commissioner Mayby and McGriff have identified in terms of cost to the city.
Have you guys recently been running up against 120-day issues? I mean, is this a workload thing?
No, it's not a workload thing.
Okay. But I'm just, is it, so then is it, because I know that most city councils hate land use, and they don't want to deal with it. They want to deal with, you know, honorary, swearing in police, and-
Policy-making things, and land use is a quasi judicial thing. And if the criteria govern the decision, it shouldn't make any difference whether the planning commission makes the decision, or the City Commission makes the decision, or a hired attorney makes the decision.
But you do have, I think you do, with a, with a large body, you do have the benefit of that governmental mechanism where you have five people or seven people deliberating and voting, as opposed to having one land use czar, as opposed. So I'm for it and I'm against it, in a way, for those reasons, really. Because I know that, I know that the City Council gets really, gets pretty, the agenda gets pretty full with that kind of stuff, and they'd rather not have to deal with some of that stuff, I imagine. And I think that sometimes we'd rather not have them deal with it, because it gets political. But at the same time, you just don't know what kind of, whether or not you're going to get a quality decision made on certain issues. So I'm really, I'm really divided.
So.
Yeah.
So. I'm divided as well. I mean, I take Tom and Kathy's comments to heart, which, you know, you put one individual, one person's decisions, and they should fall under a higher scrutiny, but when you eliminate the cost, it's, and then you think of, really, the extra tool that it can give you when you need it. Because when you do need it, you can't just pull it out of your hat unless it's there. But still.
You know, the other aspect of it, I guess, that I look at is that we elect the City Commissioners for a reason, and that's that they're accountable to the citizens. A hearings officer is not accountable to the citizens directly. They're only accountable through the Commissioners. So, you know, when it comes time to vote, I can't vote against that hearings officer because they made a decision I didn't agree with. But I can vote against the Commissioner. So I would be, I'd be a little reticent to vote in favor of this, just because it kind of, I think, gives the Commissioners the potential opportunity to dodge difficult issues.
And we would hope, though, that whether it's a hearings officer, or the Planning Commission, or the Historic Review Board, or staff, or even the City Commission, that, you know, serving in that quasi judicial role should be devoid of politics in the ideal world. I mean, we have adopted code that we're to implement, and those are the set rules. If we don't like the code, we change the code. We don't deny something because we wish we had something in code. And it's back to the, to how a hearing is supposed to work. So, you know, I understand where you're coming from, too, that you want to hold folks accountable. And that, you know, and that's true on policy decisions, on budgetary issues. You know, this is, this is a hearing, though. This is a, with set-out rules for procedure, for evidence, for public comment, for findings.
We have an individual who wants to make a statement. Should we-
You're off the hook, Kelly.
I do have one question, as Mr. Gifford comes forward, and that is, if the applicant, if one of the two people in the hearings officer's decision wants to appeal it, who do they appeal it to?
Luba.
Okay, so the City Commission's completely out of the loop at that point.
That's correct.
Okay. And here's a familiar face.
Thank you for staying.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, my name is Wayne Gifford, of Oregon City. I read this because it apparently was sent to the CIC, and I'm a member of the CIC Land Use Committee.
Which this are you referring to?
I beg your pardon?
Which this are you referring to?
This issue.
Okay.
We're talking about LE 1201, 001. And I guess I will be a member of that CIC Land Use Committee for a while. I'm only Secretary of the CIC through the end of the year, but I think it's a little up in the air. When I read the, when I read the proposal, it seemed, I took a different take on it than I, than I thought that, as hardly Mr. O'Brien took on it. They seem to frame this as a requirement, and I seem to think that it was an option. And, and so I'm going to phrase my questions as though it was an option, that this is a tool in the toolbox to be used. And I had a similar question about the fiscal impact, because I didn't see anything where this could, how much would this cost? Are they going to, you know, would the, would the officer be on retention, or what? I like the idea of, I'm not sure, would you suggest to me that the appellant pay, or the applicant-
The applicant.
The applicant pay for appeal? So that's, that kind of takes the financial burden off of, off of the city, for certain. It sounds almost as though it's an ombudsman for hire, that if there was a really controversial issue, that the Commission could hire the officer in a non-political environment to be able to make a more objective opinion. The concern that I, and regarding accountability, I think that the Commissioners still would be accountable, because it would be up to the Commissioners to hire, or not hire, or choose not to hire, an officer. So I think that there still would be electorate recourse if they didn't like the way the City Commission was, was moving in that regard. The biggest question that I had was criteria, because I didn't see anywhere, under what basis? Is there a way that it could be stated as to, under what conditions? It sounds a little capricious, as whether the Commission would choose to or not. If there was some guidelines to say, well, here's a condition, we have too many people that are too closely involved, or, I don't know if you can make it objective enough or not, but it would be nice if there were some, at least some guidelines of conditions as to what circumstances the Commission could use such a tool. Those were my only comments.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to respond to the point about the criteria or conditions, if you would like.
Go ahead, Carrie.
As it currently stands right now, the City Commission has the authority to delegate its decision-making determinations to anybody who wants to. It has done that with the Planning Commission. The code calls out that the Planning Commission reviews certain decisions. The code calls out that the HRB reviews certain decisions. And it does, and it does that because it decides not to hear all of its, all of the cases. And it doesn't have to have a reason why, per se, it's just the way they've structured the code, and this is sort of a similar thing. The problem with having criteria for delegation is that, first, it limits the City Commission's delegation powers, and it doesn't, they don't need to be limited legally. Second thing, it's a problem with them, is that that decision then could potentially be a land use decision, could potentially be appealed to Luba. And what the city wouldn't want to be getting into is this sort of multi-layered decision-making. And in this way, the City Commission has this power legally to delegate, and it can create itself another decision-making layer as a tool, and it can just exercise that authority. So that was sort of the rationale.
And I could actually see the danger of having criteria, is that somebody could say, well, if it meets all those criteria, then you ought to delegate it, rather than you have the option, now it becomes almost an obligation to do it. So I like the idea of having the discretion to choose.
I can see Mr. Gifford's concern. It's the third Wednesday, and it's an odd-numbered day. I don't want to decide it, send it to him.
I doubt it, I would do that.
Could I prevail upon the Commission for another 15 seconds?
Cool.
I did notice a parallel, insofar as the opportunity of having a tool, and that parallel would be, recently, there was a, there was a citizen initiative, and there was a question of something being put on the ballot, and there was an opportunity to put an explanatory statement on the ballot. But because we didn't have an ordinance that would allow that, we could not produce an explanatory statement. That ordinance, I hope, will someday happen, so that we would have that if we ever needed it. And the parallels that I see is, maybe we'll never use this, but if we ever needed to, we shouldn't have to go back and, you know, and try to artificially construct a tool that would look as though it was just for a specific incident.
Thank you.
I have another question for Kelly. I was looking at the transmittal sheet that was sent back by Tom and Kathy, and to whom did these transmittal sheets go to? And I have a specific reason for asking, because a certain person is a land use chair of one of the neighborhood associations, and that person did not receive it.
We send it to Katie Riggs, who is the Assistant to the City Manager. She's to the Citizen Engagement Committee, and she sends all those notices out.
She probably does to the CIC, but specifically, if there's a land use transmittal, it comes from one of B-roll.
The question is, was it sent to all the neighborhood associations?
Yes, and the land use chairs. Because I didn't get it, just why I'm asking.
We send it to the neighborhood association chairs, but not land use chairs, apparently.
Okay.
Probably the representatives, not necessarily the chairs.
On a routine basis, I usually see all this stuff, even if it goes to our chair. So that's-
We can verify.
I was aware of it, because our CIC representative asked me about it, and I told her I had not seen it.
So I think, you know, not to jump in here, I'm sure there's more conversation that needs to occur, but you've already heard, you know, the request for the fiscal impact. It sounds like we're going to probably continue this a little bit. You know, we can go back and check and make sure that it was mailed to all the neighborhood association chairs. If it hasn't, we will do that and advertise the next date, and we'll come back with you and update whether that did occur originally, or if we had to come back and re-mail. But as well as trying to put together some type of fiscal impact statement, if you need more than what you've heard tonight so far.
I'm not opposed to this, I just haven't heard enough to go forward with it.
Completely behind it.
Yeah. And, you know, like I said, as a City Commissioner or a City Attorney, there was a lot of times like, oh, I'd love to just, you know, there's like seven of these tonight, and-
Wouldn't you ever have seven appeals on the agenda? I mean, really?
It just seemed like seven.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it seemed like-
Seven issues.
Usually the ones that Bobby McLaughlin just went on for Amber.
Well, you know, those people are busybodies anyway, so what the heck, you know?
So I guess, there's no ulterior motive here. We're trying to identify, you know, as we get into more complicated land use issues, as we're partnering in these private-public partnerships, there could be a time in the future where there is a perception, or there is an actual bias.
Where are we partnering on public-private partnerships?
The Cove.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we've done it historically, and if, you know, when those go for appeal, it's a tool. It's really all we're trying to provide, because I'd hate to be in a situation where we're up here, and, well, we're kind of a co-applicant, and we already approved it through a renewal, and now we're hearing it on appeal, but, you know, and I, and I think that everyone up there, and in your positions, and at the City Commission and HRB, you know, when we talk about bias, conflict, interest, I truly believe that everyone can make a decision without that, but there is always the perception, and sometimes, no matter what you decide, the other side's going to perceive that you are biased. And hate to be in a situation where, gosh, I wish we had this option, and we don't, because it doesn't happen very often. I agree with that. But the one time it does, we won't have the tool available, and we'll make the change, and we may never use it again for 10 years.
And we know there wouldn't be a misuse of the process, but could we revisit if we, if we, if there was a problem?
Certainly, but we can change the code, just like we're changing it now.
Well, you guys are great today, but that was what can happen, you know, 10 years from now.
The problem, what's it, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, the problem with waiting until there's a problem is, then you get accused of dodging the issue, or emergency passing ordinances, or whatever, and-
Well, a goalpost problem is the most particular problem.
Yeah. So I, you know, my, my view on it is that it's a valid thing to have, and my only real concern was the cost. And if it's a situation where we can either mitigate the cost somehow by attaching it to the applicant, or minimizing it by not having it in an ongoing cost, that'd be the most important.
I guess I'd like to, you know, be able to talk a little bit, because if it's a type-two decision, it's a staff decision, we're limited by ORS to what we can charge at $250.
Yeah.
So if that- So if that were to somehow get passed on to a hearings officer, that would be a cost to the city.
But I think it's unlikely that a type-two decision, that where the staff makes the decision in the first place, and then it gets appealed to the city commission, I don't know about here, I think it's unlikely that those are the types of cases that would get delegated to a hearings officer. The cases that are going to go to the hearings officer are going to be complicated, they're going to be multi-party, they're going to be multiple component, and they're not going to be type-twos. They're either going to be type-threes, or they're going to be zone changes, so...
I do agree with that.
Which sounds like criteria.
Well, I mean, but that's what's written into the language of the COA proposal, I mean, that's...
Discretion.
So it sounds like we're kind of leaning toward favoring approval of this, but maybe you can come back with the amendment regarding cost.
And at that point, I'd be willing to hear feedback from the work session, too. I mean, we've kind of run, we're on record now, so now something from the city commission.
So I guess if I could pass on to the city commission tomorrow, kind of, I'm hearing, you know, one is the, what is the fiscal impact of this, two is, you know, kind of the concern about how this would be used.
Right.
You know, is this just going to pass along? I mean, you know, do they want to limit their discretion, which I would not recommend, because I think you never know what's going to come before you. And then the other concern, like Carrie pointed out, was you don't want to create a situation where you create criteria that are unappealable and you have to make findings against...
Just general guidelines, just kind of a ballpark field for...
I think you have another issue, is that having been a past chair of the state citizen involvement advisory committee, I have concerns about putting another layer between the elected and the electorate. And our community is still small enough where people are already intimidated about coming up in front of a hearings body. I see that this could have the potential effect of people feeling like they have to have an attorney, which, you know, some of my best friends are attorneys. I would like people to feel that they can come, be through the people that they've elected, and they can hear their case, and they can have their day in court. If they don't like that day, then they can put out the bucks and they can appeal to Luba or the state Supreme Court, or wherever it needs to go. And I think that while it can be perceived as a tool and a benefit, there's also that other, there's the unintended consequences. And, you know, we're not Portland, we're not like Oswego. We have a representative form of government here where everyone should feel free, to the best of their ability, to come and hear, have the people that they duly elected to hear their issue, complaint, or whatever it is. And that's not, that's not necessarily the case of, you know, and I've been before hearings officers during my career, I'm, you know, I'm not, and I've been on this other side of the thing, but I can see where this might have the effect of...
A chilling effect.
Thank you. It could have that, and I would hate to see that. I would hate to see people feel like they couldn't, they couldn't come and talk to those people that they put in office. I just, you know, I just, you know, again, it's, it's, there's two sides to...
It kind of goes hand-in-hand with that whole accountability thing, too. You know, I mean, when you know the commissioners that are sitting up here, because they're part of the community, it's a different dynamic than somebody that, who knows where they came from, maybe they're from Salem, or Eugene, or a different place.
And they're the best possible person they can be, but again...
They may be absolutely making the best possible decision, but like Denise is saying, you have no background with that person, so it's a different dynamic. It's not necessarily better or worse, it's just different. You know, I know some of the commissioners by name, and I've seen them in some of the public meetings, and shake hands with them. I would have no idea who the hearings officer is, so it's just a different dynamic there.
Certainly.
And I, you know, not that I would ever aspire to elected office, but I applaud people who put themselves out there and put themselves up there to do a very difficult job. And I think that hearing the occasional land use cases, that's part of that job, and if they don't want to do that, you know, maybe they don't really need to be elected. So it comes with a package, there's the good, the bad, and the ugly, and, you know, my friend sitting here next to me has...
Been all three.
The good, the bad, and the ugly? No, I wouldn't say that. But you've been through some good times, some bad times, and sometimes you wanted to chuck it in. And I appreciate all the work that you did, and I appreciate the work that the commission does. I don't always agree with them, but that's part of having a representative government.
Right.
You don't always get your way. Citizen vote, it means you have the opportunity to be heard, but you don't always get your way.
And that's where you get to vote.
And that's why you get to vote.
For those people.
So since it's almost 10...
Do you need a motion?
Would you like to continue it to a date certain?
I think we should.
Okay. We can continue it to the same night as the Red Soils?
Yeah. January 14th.
Correct.
Does it need to be the 14th? It could be the following meeting, so we don't have to have two long conversations back-to-back.
It's at your discretion.
I'd be more comfortable with the 28th and have, so we're not going to actually 10 or 11.
Hey, they might throw some, they might throw a surprise in on us, you know?
28th is fine unless we have some urgency.
Is the city, when does the city commission have this scheduled? I thought I saw something on the 16th, that they, this was tentatively scheduled for them.
We can continue the 16th if needed.
Yeah, that's, you know, if they make a decision, that's fine, we're not required to weigh in on this, really, are we?
Wouldn't take it to them without your input.
Yeah, we, it's part of the job.
I know, but...
So does everybody agree with the 28th?
Mm-hmm. I already have it on my calendar.
That's our vote.
Make a motion to continue to date certain 28th.
Seven.
There are three seconds.
Amen.
Are we doing the amen?
Commissioner McGiff.
Aye. Or amen, whichever.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Commissioner Hicken.
Aye.
Commissioner Estes.
Aye.
Church about?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Commissioner Mayby, remind me that we do have separation of church and state, so I cannot say amen.
So, Tony, we have communications on the...
I just want to press on it, this Thursday, December 13th, from 5:30 to 7:30, we'll have the South End Concept Plan open house, will be held out at the McLaughlin Elementary School, which is at 19230 South End Road. Staff is prepared to provide a short overview at about 6:15, so hopefully, if you're, everyone in the city is welcome to come, participate on that. Also, if you do have information or you can't make that, please do visit the website, it's www.southendconceptplan.org, and South End Concept Plan is one word, and they'll have information on there, updates, community survey, that type of information will be on that website. The community survey, I believe, is going to go up on the 13th in conjunction with that, with that open house.
So what was the survey that they asked us to fill out already? Is that a different survey?
We got lots.
I did, anyway, you reminded me, I have been participating as your official representative on the CAT, and I want you to know that I have been behaving myself, so you won't be getting, and who's laughing? Won't get any bad reports from Pete, but we've had two meetings, which I have attended both of them, and there is an interesting variety of people who sit on the group. I didn't say that, I just said it's an interesting variety, since it's only our second meeting, it's, I haven't quite figured out all the dynamics yet, but...
Coming from you, that makes it even more intriguing.
But we've had, so far, we received an existing conditions report, and there were lots and lots of questions about that, particularly about the transportation. Each of us is responsible for setting up one to two meetings with community groups, and we're going to have the CAT staff come to our, and you might tell Pete, this January 3rd is the McLaughlin neighborhood meeting, and we got somebody on the agenda, we don't know if it's Pete, or Steve, or Jeffrey, or, but anyway, we're scheduled. And there's been some meetings with some of the church groups, there's been a meeting with the CPO, and each of the CAT members takes an opportunity to attend those meetings and be present and accounted for. And we did get some survey, I know, I did it, he sent it to me, and I did it that next, right that minute. So there is some community survey, if you have a chance, go on and take it. And I'm very hopeful, at this point after meeting number two, that we are going to be able to reasonably work things out. I think that I volunteered because I want to see firsthand how this works, and I also want to talk to other people in the community about the importance of them not ignoring this, but paying attention, because it is important, and hopefully, third time will be the term.
Cool. Anything else, Tony?
There's a little blow in the paper about Blue Hill. Still talking? Oh, good, that's good, I'm glad to hear that, just want people still talking. I hope everybody came to the bridge opening, because that was pretty cool and awesome.